Councilmember Von Rudiger?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Taglia?
Here.
Mayor LaBrus?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10-4-6 at SEC, notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and council and invited guests. This is the Cal meeting for June 11, 2019. Tonight, we have a presentation for a CSO overview from Arcadis and also Suburban. I don't know which is going to take the lead here, but you're welcome. Come on up.
YMCA is first?
No, the CSO is first. The CSO is first?
Pardon me? Okay. There.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Delgore, and I'm with Arcadis. With me tonight is Frank Volado, also with Arcadis, and Megan Bushlow. And we just want to thank the mayor and council for this opportunity. It'll be, I promise you, a very short presentation. We will take about 10, 15 minutes to go through the presentation. And just by way of background, so why are we here tonight? City of Hackensack received a permit, a discharge elimination permit from the state of New Jersey approximately five years ago. And in that permit, there was a requirement for the city to develop a long-term control plan. And basically, what that plan is for is the city currently discharges combined sewer overflow, and I'll go through that in a minute, to the receiving water, which in this case is the Hackensack River. And because of water quality issues, the state of New Jersey has asked Hackensack, as well as every CSO community in the state of New Jersey, to develop a long-term control plan. So this is kind of an offshoot of that, and this is the development of the city's Hackensack plan. So right now, all we're going to be discussing tonight is alternatives, what is being on the plate for discussion that the city will be considering. And then the DEP is allowing one additional year to submit a final plan. So this is just development of alternative report. Does not include any recommendations as to what the city is going to undertake, but it definitely includes a discussion on what alternatives are viable. So with that, I've prepared a short agenda. Frank is going to help me through the agenda. We're going to talk a little bit about the overview of the city's combined sewer system, the goals. We're going to look at some of the alternatives. And Frank's also going to discuss a bit on public participation, of which this meeting is a part of that program. So just a quick overview on, for those that may not be familiar with what is a combined sewer system. You can see it here pictorially. So when there is no rain, basically, the wastewater flows directly to the wastewater treatment plant. There are no overflows. There are no discharges to the Hackensack River. But because this is a combined sewer system, and again, every combined sewer system operates in this fashion, if the system gets overloaded during extreme wet weather events, there is a portion of the diluted wastewater flow that exits the system and discharges into the nearest water body. Again, in this case, for the city of Hackensack, that would in fact be the Hackensack River. So here is a graphic that shows the city's combined sewer system. Basically, there are two drainage areas, the Anderson Street drainage area and the Court Street. You see the two outfall locations that are shown by the red dots. So any of the drainage, when it rains, if the system cannot handle it in Anderson Street, the flow exits through the Anderson Street outfall. Similarly, for Court Street, if the system cannot handle the flow, Court Street outfall comes into play, and that's a discharge point. Here, you see, many of you have already seen these facilities. They've been in operation for many, many years. This is a picture of the Anderson Street screening facility. So what the city does right now is, when there is a wet weather event, these screening facilities come online, and they basically capture the heavy material onto the screens, and they get collected and redeposited back into the BCUA interceptor system. So these screening facilities have been online for many, many years. They function quite nicely. But this is the step one that DEP required all permittees to employ. And now we're working on longer-term and obviously more expensive approaches. So there are two goals that the state has set forth, or two approaches, I should say, to accomplish CSO reduction. I'm not going to bore everybody with that discussion tonight, but the two approaches are a presumptive approach whereby you capture 85% of the pollutants before they get discharged into the waterway, and you limit the number of overflows down to four to six per year. The other approach is what we call the demonstration approach, and that's by sampling the water body. You indicate that enough work has been done and that the river is achieving water quality currently. The city has partnered with Passaic Valley Sewage Commission. That work has already been completed, and the Hackensack River unfortunately is one of those water bodies that there is a water quality issue. And so, a plan needs to be developed to reduce and improve, to reduce the overflows and improve the water quality. So with that as background, I'd like to get into a discussion of the alternatives, and I'm going to let Frank take over for the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, everyone. So to continue what Mark was speaking about, the alternatives that we were required to evaluate as part of the permit include green infrastructure, sewer separation, infiltration and inflow control, treating the CSO discharge before it enters the Hackensack River, and some sort of storage alternative, whether it's a storage tank or a tunnel or within the same, within the existing system. So the first alternative that we evaluated was green infrastructure. And green infrastructure stores and absorbs and actually reduces the peak runoff of rainfall during a heavy rainfall event that could slow down the amount of volume entering the combined sewer system at the same time. That being said, a positive is a lower capital cost for installation of green infrastructure, and it can assist in reducing some small-scale localized flooding situations. Some of the negatives, though, are it has a higher maintenance cost to keep it operable year after year. It's very site-specific, and it depends highly on soil conditions underneath the green infrastructure that's installed. And unfortunately, there's a pretty low impact on combined sewer overflows in the grand scheme of green infrastructure. So we looked into possible locations throughout the city where we can implement green infrastructure, but we actually based this off a study that Rutgers University completed within the city. We're actually looking into more locations than just this, but this was a good start and actually allowed us to model green infrastructure within the city's combined sewer system computer model that simulates overflows. So first, we took about 5% and 10% of the combined sewer system area and implemented green infrastructure in those locations. What we found was that it brought the percent capture from currently 68% to about 70%. So there was about a 2% increase in percent capture of the CSO volume. And if you recall, our goal was 85%. So it seems that green infrastructure alone isn't the solution to solving the CSO problems that we have in this location. So the number of overflows really don't get decreased with green infrastructure alone. The next alternative we looked at was citywide sewer separation, which would mean we would completely build a new stormwater system throughout the entire city of Hackensack, so we'd have a separate sanitary system and stormwater system. The positives is that it would improve water quality in the Hackensack River, and it would either reduce or eliminate all of the combined sewer overflows that would occur. And the negatives, it does have a very high cost. We'd have to replace 31, or install about 31 miles of storm sewers throughout the entire city, so we'd have extensive construction, and we estimate it would be upwards of $500 million in order to do that across the entire city. That would also include road restoration costs as well. The third alternative we looked at was end-of-pipe treatment, and this would occur at each overflow or outfall location where we would construct pretreatment and chemical disinfection facilities at each outfall, similar to the size of the screening facilities that are already in place. What they would do is they would pretreat the sewage coming in, and then it would disinfect using chemicals and then discharge to the Hackensack River to clean up the combined sewage flow before entering the river. It could potentially have a lower cost than some of the other alternatives. However, we're uncertain if this alternative will meet the water quality standards that are being presented to us. The fourth alternative was infiltration and inflow control. Infiltration could occur anywhere where we have breaks in the sewer pipes, where groundwater can seep in, there could be a faulty manhole cover, other situations like that where we have groundwater and stormwater entering the system in unwanted areas essentially. And the way we'd be able to fix that is either repair or replace some of the sewer pipes that has, that have these issues. We were able to model this as well. We did a condition assessment study of the combined sewer system in 2015, and this identified different areas where we had infiltration issues. So we estimated how much infiltration was entering the combined sewer system. We put that into the computer model, and we found a very low change in the combined sewer overflows. In fact, it didn't change the number of overflows that we would have at all. So this would be a higher-cost alternative with a pretty low impact to the combined sewer overflows. And the last alternative we looked at were storage alternatives. This would be where we would have either underground storage tanks or an underground tunnel, something to store the flow during a wet weather or rain event of the combined sewage. And at that point, they would store the flow, we'd wait for the rain event to be over, and then they would slowly pump back the combined sewage that was held to the, back to the treatment plant at Bergen County Utilities Authority, and there it would be treated. There's two different main types of storage. There's inline and offline. Inline storage would be utilizing the existing, any existing capacity within the combined sewer system. Unfortunately, the city's combined sewer system is already at maximum capacity, so we can't fit any more combined sewage flow in the system itself. Therefore, we looked at offline storage, which, like I mentioned, would be either a tank or a tunnel. So first, we modeled a storage tunnel, and the storage tunnel would be, it's shown in green here, it's just a theoretical location for now. It would be from the Anderson Street outfall down to the Court Street outfall. It would be about 5,000 feet, close to a mile. The tunnel would be about 100 feet deep. And the results of the model told us that anywhere from a 10 and 1/2 foot to an 18-foot diameter tunnel would get us anywhere from 86% to 96% capture of the CSO volume. So we would be reaching our combined, our water quality goals at that point. That being said, there's most likely a high price tag with the construction of such a tunnel, and the constructibility of a deep tunnel would have pretty significant construction risks involved with it. The next storage alternative we looked at were two underground storage tanks. One would be located at the Anderson Street outfall, the other one would be located at the Court Street outfall. They'd be about 100 feet deep. And when we modeled these, we found that anywhere, tanks from anywhere from 60 foot in diameter up to 115 feet in diameter would satisfy the water quality goals. We would get anywhere from 85% to 95% capture of the CSO volume. And we'd be able to reduce our overflows down from 56, anywhere from 4 to 20. That being said, there are siting issues with this. We need to make sure we had enough land available to implement these, and there is most likely a high cost of installing this type of infrastructure as well. So to briefly touch on public participation goals, it's our goal, and also stated in the permit, that we need to try to get public input and feedback during the selection of these alternatives. So our goal is to educate the residences and businesses around the city about the combined sewer system and about any future projects and projected costs of these projects. And like I said, we really would love to incorporate any public feedback to find out what's important to the residents and businesses and what would make the most sense as a whole. So how could we get feedback? We have surveys currently posted to the Hackensack's website. The CSO webpage, it's hackensack.org/cso. We also have hard copies here for anyone to fill out if they're interested, and this would just give us a better feeling and understanding of what's important about the combined sewer system to the residents here. We also hope to have more public meetings and public work sessions specifically about combined sewers, so we can move forward and get additional public feedback directly about combined sewers there. And finally, we'd love to invite any interested public residents to a public, any residents to a public participation team within the city of Hackensack, so they can assist with outreach efforts. So just to summarize, we talked about the alternatives that we had to look at through the permit, and our next steps are to refine some cost estimates for these alternatives and continue outreach efforts to reach the public here and get some feedback. If anyone is interested, we have an email address set up, and it's listed here, cso-team@hackensackdpw.org, and we'd love to hear from you. So that's all we have for today.
Thank you. Should we open up the questions? All right, I need, anybody who wants to question this, I want to open this up to the public. So I need a motion to open the public?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Anybody who wants to speak to this issue and this issue only, please come forward. Give your name to the clerk, please.
Richard Solotan Hesek. Have there been no cost workups on the tunnel or the tanks yet? I can't see the speaker. Any ballpark figure of the tank or the tunnel?
We've been developing those costs, and we are in the process of sharing that information with the city, with the mayor and council.
More of a comment than a question. Tanks and holding it. The vortex valves at the present locations, while basically mandated by the DEP some many years ago, I believe without question have caused backup and flooding in the central water. We're talking about tanks and tunnels retaining. Are you mindful that you don't want to do that if you do go with that as one of the alternatives you follow, I'm trying to say? It's a real problem, the flooding in certain areas.
That's an excellent question. So you're right about the vortex valves basically restrict the flow to the BCUA interceptor system. So the storage and tank alternatives that Frank was talking about would basically allow that excess flow to go into a tank and hold it. So it would not make-
So it's going to be huge enough so that-
Absolutely.
No matter what, it ain't going to back up?
And by the way, what we should also say is, and even with the storage tanks that are ultimately sized, the overflows will not be closed off. So DEP understands that both the, you know, unfortunately, the Court and Anderson Street outfalls are here to stay, because as we all know, right, there'll always be a storm event greater than one that you previous, like to use the analogy Sandy, right? There'll always be another superstorm Sandy on the horizon that's going to have to be addressed, and so the outfalls will remain open.
Because they're not going to want to hear from the people in the neighborhood after it's built to back up.
Absolutely, absolutely. You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak to this subject? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next presentation.
Next, we have a presentation from the YMCA, Glenn McAfee.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the council for allowing us to come before you today and do our presentation upon what we think would be a great partnership between the city and the YMCA. Joined this evening by three other people. I am not Glenn McAfee, but I'm Rick O'Rab. I'm the president and CEO of the Metropolitan YMCA of the Oranges, which is the parent YMCA organization to the Greater Bergen County Y right here in Hackensack. Tonight, I am joined by Glenn McAfee, who is the executive director of the Greater Bergen County Y, Paul Kuster, who is the senior consultant for a firm that we use for facility development, it's called Grow Development, and our engineering firm, Suburban Consulting Engineers. We're proud to invite Erin Abline to also speak to you tonight as well. So I want to give you a high-level overview of the Metro Y of the Oranges, so you get an understanding of who we are and the capacity and impact that we have as a, as a nonprofit cause-driven charity. The Metro Y of the Oranges is a four-star charity as designated by Charity Navigator, and we've held that designation for eight consecutive years. Only 4% of nonprofits in this country earn that distinction, so it speaks to our fiscal stewardship and transparency, among other things. We have seven branches in our YMCA association that cut a wide swath of New Jersey from Essex County to Bergen County and Hackensack, to Passaic County and Wayne, and throughout Sussex County. Every one of our Ys is different, and so we celebrate the diversity of our YMCA in program, in spirit, in community, and in facilities. And we are the largest YMCA in the state of New Jersey. There are about 33 or so YMCA's that are incorporated in this state. We operate a $46 million budget, and that's large for a YMCA, and that ranks us about the 50th largest Y in the country out of about 800 YMCA's or so. We're also the 20th largest non-for-profit in the state of New Jersey, and if you know anything about non-for-profits in New Jersey, there are about 30,000 of them. So I did want to share with that because it speaks to our capacity as well as our ability to deliver and get some things done. About 42,500 total members, and you see the numbers here for a program and policy of volunteers who give about 27,000 hours to support the programs that the Y provides on a daily basis. In 2018, after working with the Greater Bergen County Y under a management agreement for about two years, we combined with that YMCA. And so now they fall under our YMCA umbrella and are part of the association known as the Metro Y of the Oranges. But the Y in Hackensack, otherwise known as the Greater Bergen County Y, has been here for 101 years, and you know that. And this is a picture, goes back to 1927. So this is when the current building that we're in was built. And so while the building has served us well and continues to serve us well, it is outdated, outmodelled, and could do so much more if we had a new facility that would allow us to serve more of your residents. So the YMCA is known for swimming. As a matter of fact, we are the leading provider of swim instruction, and we are America's swim teacher. And this goes back to, this is actually the pool in Hackensack. The Y was also the creator of basketball at Springfield, Springfield YMCA. Dr. James Naismith also created volleyball. I'm not going to show you a picture of that. A Y is also a place where children, adults, and families can connect to one another to enhance a community. This is the actual cornerstone celebration of the current building back in 1927. You see, it was a beautiful day with rain, but the crowd still came out because the community understood and still understands the value of a YMCA in their community. So while I've just shared with you a little of the history and the high-level overview about our Y, what we're hoping to do today is really to talk about what the future could be and what the vision of the Y in Hackensack maybe should be. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Paul Kuster, who will go through some visuals of YMCA's that are in other parts of this state and throughout the country. Thank you.
Let me, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Okay, I found the right button. I'm with Grow Development, and Grow Development is an organization that was organized about five years ago at the suggestion of the YUSA. The 800-plus YMCA's, corporate YMCA's had 2,700 buildings between them, and we're finding it very difficult to provide services for supporting planning and design and operation of those buildings, and so our company was formed. Our services include capital development and real estate planning, space planning and design, interiors and branding, and facility maintenance and management. So that is, that's Grow Development. We have learned that, and we've seen a growing trend of more and more municipalities and YMCA's working together. And many of those are in public parks. They take on quite a range of different types of facilities and relationships. They range from operating pools, sports fields, to full YMCA's, to operating day camps. We're here, I want to talk a little bit today about the full-sized YMCA's in the probably 40,000 to 60,000 square foot range, kind of roughly what the YMCA is considering at this time. There are quite a few of those locations where Ys have those sized facilities in parks. A quick scan of our data, we have three of them in Washington State, some in Florida, Texas, here in New Jersey, Summit Y is operating, working on one, constructing one. And there are other types of facility relationships. What I'd like to do now, and my task, is to show you kind of some of what that might Because the Y has proposed or is conceptually looking at approximately a 50,000 square foot facility with a two-story facade that would be on the street view, I picked some Ys that have that type of a street view. This is a two-story one. The activities, there's activity spaces that usually face the street, that makes them about 14 feet high in terms of their ceiling height. Two stories plus the floor in between equals about 30 feet. And then on top of that, some utilities, some building systems that would be screened. So we're talking about a height in the range of 35 to 38 feet. And let me just show you some more. The idea is that they can be developed around the context, they can be designed around the context of the local community. The, I would like to spend another minute or two on kind of showing you the types of venues that we see inside of Ys. And we have come to these venues because we now have designed over 300 new YMCA's, and because we're, that's our specialty, we don't do other work. That gives us a sense of what works in terms of space planning adjacencies and efficiencies so that we're not building more than we actually need, and we're making sure the interiors of the buildings are very efficient. This is what we usually look at for the entrance of the building. This is what we usually look at for the entrance of the building and through the middle of the building, we call it the spine. What it provides is both a feeling of activity inside the building, because a lot of the program spaces are visible to each other. It also provides control and security opportunities to be able to not have dead-end corridors and that sort of thing. One of the things we've learned is YMCA's that provide child watch have seen the participation in their Ys go up dramatically because families or parents who may have younger children are able to count on the Y to take care of children for short periods of time while they participate in the Y's classes, or other activities, or their health and wellness Ys are including now adventure centers for older children. It attracts a lot of families to participate, not only in the health activities, the swimming activities, but it also tends to be able to provide an opportunity for families to participate together. One of the most-used spaces in a Y is a multipurpose space. Multipurpose spaces, we usually build two or three of them into a Y, and it's all based on what the Y's local particular needs are, but we recommend that. And multipurpose spaces get used for exercise classes in the mornings, senior classes late in the morning, after-school programs, teen centers, exercise classes, and community meetings. So those spaces are very much in demand, and there's always lots of activity that get used six, seven times a day for different purposes. More and more of our YMCA's are putting a niche inside those community, those all-purpose spaces of a community kitchen. It doesn't take much of the square feet for that, and it provides links with health entities and other community groups that can participate with the kids and families that participate in the Y. Actually, folks look to the Y for exercise activities, so group activities are done in studios, usually two, three. Occasionally, Ys that have, anticipating a large membership, they'll add some specialty spaces. And in all of the spaces that the Y designs, we always remember that we're a center of community activity, and to be the center of the community activity, we always want to make sure that we have gathering places inside the Y, whether it's in the lobby, the observation areas around the pool, or the queuing areas outside of the exercise classes. And it gives a chance for an entire community to feel like they're part of a community, so it's not just an in-and-out activity. Naturally, another look at wellness centers, and what would a Y be without a gym? Ys are now building the gyms so that they're divisible, and they can do kids' sports on one side and adult sports on the other side, or volleyball and basketball, and pickleball has all of a sudden become a big deal. And then pools. One of the things that we look at in pools is realizing that there's a lot of pools that are competitively based, and the Y does include competitive activities, but they also really need to be designed for families and for seniors and kind of a whole gamut of community activities. And so we look at pools that can serve those types, those many different activities. Here you see the lap pool on the far side is a warm water teaching pool that also gets used for water exercise classes, and you can see the sliding board off in the corner. And then there are, you know, obviously, Ys have locker rooms, but more and more Ys are now looking at having one locker room with private stalls in it that enables fathers with their daughters or mothers with their sons to be able to get dressed for swimming lessons and that sort of thing. It also provides better supervision on behalf of the Y. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So we want to share what we think now are the benefits for the city, because we do believe that we could bring a lot to enhance what you're trying to do with the city in terms of your entire renaissance and redevelopment approach to the city at this point. So we're certainly well aware of the ongoing effort at Johnson Park, and we think that what we're proposing will be a really positive complement to what you're doing and will ultimately be the jewel of the city, a place where people will know is the place to go if you're a family, if you're a senior, if you're a child. And so we think citing a Y at Johnson Park would certainly enhance the community to a very, very big level. The Y would also collaborate with the city to bring new programs to Johnson Park, and we view this as a public and private, although we're a non-for-profit, a public-private partnership. And as Paul indicated, there are a lot of Ys that are now working with cities, with towns, and with departments within those cities and towns and other non-for-profit organizations. So we see this as a way to lift up the entire city to benefit and serve more of your residents. And we anticipate the majority of our members will come from the city of Hackensack. So right now, at our current location, we have about 750 or so units of membership. We did a market study, and the market study indicates we would have 4,000 units of membership. And they're not all coming from Hackensack, but a large majority of them would. We'd probably attract a total of around 12,000 or so total members, who again are not taking part in YMCA services right now because of the limitations on the current facilities. And when I talk about the programs and services that we provide, Glenn is going to speak to them later, but some of these activities and programs are life-saving skills. And when I talk about swimming, drowning is the second-leading cause of accidental death in this country. And just think of the impact that we, through you, can make if we are fortunate enough to have a partnership with the city with a new pool. We would offer programs at reduced cost to Hackensack residents. One thing I failed to highlight on one of the previous slides, our YMCA does provide financial assistance and community benefits to people who need our services, who cannot afford the full cost. Last year, our YMCA gave away $1.8 million of direct financial aid and provided another $1.3 million of free programs and services. So if someone needs the Y, we're going to embrace that person and let them come to the Y. And we also think this project will drive new business and create new jobs. Our Y right now, according to New Jersey Biz Magazine, is the 10th-largest employer in Essex County. We employ about 1,800 or so staff members. Some of the, most of the people we employ are youth, and in fact, YMCA's are the leading employer of teens. So many people start their working career through the Y. So we think we could be an incubator of employment in the city as well, and so those are the benefits we think we bring to the city as you continue your renaissance of redevelopment in Hackensack. So without further ado, I'd like to ask Erin to talk about our proposed site plan.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you all. So again, Erin Abline, I'm with Suburban Consulting Engineers. I apologize for my backstabbing. Before I get to the site plan, I just want to touch on two points real quick. First is just to iterate that we really have a unique opportunity here. I know Paul and Rick have mentioned this partnership, and that that happens frequently. What we're looking at here is a partnership on green acres and covered land. So I'm not sure how many people are familiar with green, can you hear me now? I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with green acres, but it makes things complicated to further develop sites, and I say that endearingly. So it's really unique. They actually promote relationships like this, public, private, nonprofits with public entities to do projects just like this, indoor and outdoor recreation. Okay? So that's the first point I just wanted to make. Secondly, I know how important open space, outdoor recreation, and the support infrastructure for those things are to a community like Hackensack. Without parking, without restrooms, without the open space, you know, it's necessary in these communities. So we respect that, we appreciate that, we understand that. So what you're going to see when I go to the site plan is we have included the Sears Lot. The Sears Lot is that parking lot that's bound by Johnson Park and River Street in our site plan. We are assuming that that would be acquired, included as part of Johnson Park, and offset our development to keep the open space, outdoor recreation offerings at the site. All right, so hopefully everyone can see this. I'm just going to briefly walk through this. This is an idea of what we envision at the site, and I just want to illustrate that. So starting with the building, I know that Paul already mentioned it. It is about 50,000 square feet in gross floor area over two stories.
Can you launch that, please?
No. I've got to be honest, I don't think I can.
No.
Okay.
You can go up and take a look at it.
Yeah, if you need to get closer, go for it. You know what, I can do though. If I go point, if I only slide, I made it long. So building is located here. Okay, that's in about the approximate location of the existing tennis courts. It is 50,000 square feet gross floor area. It has, yeah, you need the mic? It has a footprint of approximately 30,000 square feet. Surrounding the building are 200 parking spaces about with three different access points. Two of the access points are from the inner park road, one is directly from River Street. To the south of the building and parking lot is an area dedicated to outdoor recreation. We are showing here two tennis courts, four pickleball courts, as Paul mentioned, it's become very popular, and a play area. Also, throughout the park, there are pedestrian improvements proposed, so that would allow access from River Street in many locations into Johnson Park. Lastly, I just want to say that we have done our due diligence in terms of green acres, which I already spoke about, and all the regulatory requirements that come from the Hackensack River, and we are confident we can develop the site as shown. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Glenn McAfee, the Executive Director of the Greater Bergen County YMCA.
Thank you, and good evening. We're about to hand out to City Council some examples, a rough-up of a program guide that could represent the YMCA that we're talking about. With the, whoops. So with the opening of this new proposed facility, this is going to allow the YMCA to not only continue, as Rick said, its over 100 years of serving the Hackensack community, but really, really expand on the scope of services and programs, as well as the number of participants from Hackensack and surrounding communities that we're going to be able to serve. The proposed facility would have a six-lane, 25-yard pool, a full gymnasium, which was shown up on the screen, state-of-the-art wellness studios, equipment. What these facilities mean is what we can do with them. These allow us to do parent-child, youth, adult swim lessons, competitive swim programs, family swims, a host of group exercise programs, anywhere from starting with improving balance in seniors to wanting to learn how to salsa. The programs could also include adult sports leagues, family nights, and just a community space where the community could come and take advantage of this wonderful new building. The building also allows us to provide a number of free community benefit programs. So Live Strong is a YMCA program which empowers survivors of cancer to come and be part of their own healing process, to put illness behind them, and reconnect with their lives. Our second-grade swim and safety around water programs are, again, Rick talked about number two cause of death in predominantly youth. These programs are free programs where we teach children how to swim. We give them the skills they need so they can be safe around water, and we can reduce, which is what is a horrible, horrible statistic. We can give them the confidence and the skills that they can be safe and competent around water. Our middle school initiative is, and I'm sorry, I keep giving you my back here, but our middle school initiative is where the YMCA provides free memberships to the middle schoolers of Hackensack. Rick also said at the Y, nobody is turned away for inability to afford our programs and services. He gave the numbers for the overall association, but I can tell you, in 2018, with our smaller YMCA in Hackensack, we gave out over $220,000 through our YMCA scholarship program to families in need, and the expectation would be that that would significantly increase with a new site. Lastly, I want to make sure that it's understood that we fully commit to working with the M&amp;M Building. Our plan is to complement and not compete in any way with the programs that are there. We will work very hard to come up with opportunities to collaborate and partner with the M&amp;M Building and with the city on various programs, all to the greater benefit of our community. At this point, I'd like to give it back to Rick. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Glenn. So now I want to share with you our proposed partnership and what it could look like, and the first bullet, I want to add a word, and the word, oh, sorry, going the wrong way. We would respectfully propose an administrative transfer of the land that Erin was talking about to ensure the long-term benefit to the community. The Y will lead in funding, finding funding sources to support the project. This will not be, this will not be tax dollars or tax implications to the residents of the city. YMCA is, when we build buildings like this, we raise money from corporations and private citizens, and if the dollars make sense, then we'll finance the rest. This will have no implication on taxes for the residents of Hackensack. Similarly, the operating costs of the project of the new building will be assumed by the Y. It will be our operation to run, and typically, we'll run it successfully, and we will know what the numbers will look like before we get into the program. And then, in order to make some of these things happen, our intent will be to sell the existing YMCA location on Main Street, and in effect, taking the assets of that sale and reinvesting those dollars into the city so we can have additional impact and benefit for the residents of the city. The other benefit, which is not listed here, the partnership is then, that should turn into a ratable for the city, which would help you as well on the other side of the equation. I want to speak a little bit about our ability to deliver. Our Y is large. We have done projects like this before. We've done a $7.5 million YMCA build. We've done four and a half million dollar renovations and reimaginations. Our Y has done two mergers, most recently with the Bergen County Y. The other thing I want to share up here, and it's not a bullet, but I will share it with you right now, in terms of our proposed partnership. Should we have a partnership with the city? I think you would like to see some name identification on a YMCA in your park. So forever, this YMCA has been known as the Greater Bergen County YMCA, or the YMCA Greater Bergen County. I think I can say with confidence that I could speak to people at YUSA and get the charter named, renamed to the Hackensack YMCA, should we have a partnership going forward. So with that, that would conclude our presentation, and we can take questions. Thank you.
Has there been any other sites that were considered in the city besides Johnson Park?
As you, what am I speaking to? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay. We have spoken to another developer. We have spoken to another developer, and that conversation could still be alive, but it would likely be a different transaction, which would...could prove too costly for the YMCA to proceed.
Yeah, I mean, the two main concerns I have are, obviously Aaron spoke about it, taking, you know, green space is valuable in Hackensack, we're not a town that has a lot of green space, so that's a concern of mine. And the location, for safety reasons for children, crossing over River Street, pretty much every child in Hackensack would have to be crossing River Street to get to that location, so that's something that I would wanna explore more, maybe, you know, a traffic study, and seeing how that would impact total community.
I respect that. You should know that at our YMCA, safety is priority one. Matter of fact, in our recent strategic plan, one of our strategic priorities is creating a safe space for all. So that too would be a concern for us.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Yeah, I guess my question is, it was difficult for us to see the map of the portion of Johnson Park, and I guess I'm not understanding either the size of the piece you'd be asking, and what...where...you mentioned tennis courts, I mean, what exactly and where? If we could put that up, maybe you could just explain it a little clearer.
Yeah, we can bring it back up to us.
Which way the parking lot is?
The Sears lot, which I'm gonna refer to it as the Sears lot, is over an acre in size, a little over an acre in size.
So you would want the whole Sears lot?
Correct. We would look to incorporate the entire Sears lot.
All right, and how much more?
And then the building footprint is 30,000. So that's just your reference. So 30,000 square feet building footprint you see. The Sears lot, you can see the outline of it. That's a little over an acre.
Would the building sit on the lot, or the building would sit on the...
It's not. So what I'm showing right now, if you could see from that angle.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
That's all right.
Here's the...I'm gonna outline the Sears lot. It's right here. So it's in the middle of the tract. There's a large utility easement that runs over it that you can't place a building on that easement. So that's why we slid the building over on this side, and also spread out the park a little.
Just refresh my memory, or maybe Leo, what's there now in Johnson Park? Where the building is gonna go? You said...
There's tennis courts, right. The tennis courts are where the building is, yeah.
Anything else?
There's gravel, lot, it looks like some maintenance garage, right?
Playground.
Playground, yes, sorry, the playground, yep.
So that will disappear, the tennis court?
It'll go over, the blue is tennis courts.
Right, so the tennis court and playground go from here to being relocated over here.
Whose tennis court is that?
Whose tennis court is it today?
Is that...no. If it got moved to...would it be the city's tennis court?
No.
It'd be the city, right, Rick? The city's tennis court? Or, I mean, that's...
The city's right now, right?
Yeah, right, yeah. So in a sense, we'd be rebuilding that, because we're...
Four to two, though.
So, well, we talked about the trend in pickleball, so I put pickleball courts instead of the other two. So that's something that we could always discuss.
And what about the DPW warehouse? Where's that at?
I don't have that shown in my plan. I wasn't sure if that was ideal for the site, again, speaking about open space, so I don't have it shown anywhere. That's something we could discuss. I think there's opportunities. Right now, it's not shown in my plan.
Not only the tennis court, the playground. That would be the DPW warehouse.
And the DPW warehouse.
And the Sears parking lot, so you're taking that.
Do we know how many spots are in the Sears lot now?
It is striped, I'm not sure how many parking spaces are on that Sears lot right now.
Oh, I'll let you go, Kathy, you're done.
And again, you said the number of parking spots you'd have for your facility would be...
Well, what I'm showing wrapping around the facility right now is about 200.
About 200.
Right.
And the soccer field and the community garden and greenhouse are still there, or are they...
Yeah, so the greenhouse is right here. That's in the location, it is...I'm not showing anything different. I do have an overlay of some plans that we understood for future development of Johnson Park below, and that doesn't interfere with any of that. Yep. And the turf field is here. Does not interfere.
Okay.
Anything else I want to add?
Me, personally, I'm totally against it. If the Y wants to look at some other property in the city of Hackensack, I'm all for it, but I'm not for the Y moving to Johnson Park. And that's just my opinion.
Leo?
Okay. So how you will maybe enter from River Street into Johnson Park?
Microphone, Leo. You're not on.
How you will enter from River Street to Johnson Park?
So the entrance I'm showing right here, there's two entrances, but the main entrance into Johnson Park is where it exists today. It would just be improved in this plan. And then there's a secondary one right into the parking lot between the outdoor recreation area and the building.
So you're gonna create more traffic in that particular area? When the kids sometime they walk into the soccer fields?
If more users are coming to Johnson Park, I think traffic would increase compared to the general area, I'm not sure we're gonna, you know, see a large difference, just because it is a highly trafficked area, but I agree, a traffic study has to be done. And you heard, the Y's safety is utmost importance.
I have a few questions. Would we be able to...you say in your letter here, that you have successfully partnered with several municipalities. Would we be able to get copies of those agreements to see what those partnerships are like, and what they're about, and what they offer, if possible? And what about the...you still have residential in the existing Y?
Transfer.
Yes, we do.
All right, so that's...what's gonna happen with that?
Yeah, so we would have to give notice to those residents, and I think we have 34 or so. There is a state law that we're aware of, it'd be more than a year of notice, but then we would work with organizations to hopefully have them land safely in another organization or another facility.
All right. One of my other concerns, as you said, you said financial assistance for Hackensack residents. Hackensack does have probably a fair amount of lower-income families. Howard, is that assessed, and who makes the decision on what they're gonna pay, to make sure that it's fair?
Glenn, you wanna take that one?
So, we currently provide that through our after-schools and our after-camps and memberships. We have a, what looks to be, or what we look at as a sliding scale, like an Alice scale, 300%. And then, that's the base map to figuring out what kind of award you'd be made, but then we go above that, this human element of, say, a family out of work, or they have other hardships, that we could then, you know, increase the scholarship. So we could provide scholarships anywhere from 50% to 100%.
Okay, that's my questions.
I have one more. Currently, what percentage of your participants now at the Y would you say are Hackensack residents?
So they even got the largest percentage of our current population, it's about 40% of everybody at the Y. The next largest group is TNEC, that's 10%. And then everything else just kinda stretches out throughout Bergen, which becomes small numbers. But Hackensack is by far the largest one. And will be bigger in this proposal.
Thank you.
Okay. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this, please come forward, give your name to the clerk, please.
Richard Solick in Hackensack, New Jersey. I don't wanna be the Grinch. Steven, 200 NJ Super 185. Write it down. There's a deed restriction on Johnson Park, and the Johnson family tried to get it from the city.
Could I have that number again, Rick? I'm gonna look it up, too.
I got it, 200 NJ Super 185.
Right.
What, do you have a year of that case?
Uh, 1985. Okay. And the Johnson family, and I assume, you know, that they're still around in some form or another, aggressively sought to get that park back. And the uses that city was making, which were questionable, although the judiciary was trying to help the city, you could see that. Ben Lucci, who was Don Hanley's partner, did you remember Don Hanley? Was a judge, and who found that police pistol range, the debris that was there, some DPW vehicles, well, they all could be used to service the park, and therefore was a park used. I don't know, I mean, I'm not gonna speak against the YMCA, that's a wonderful organization, and it's a very exciting concept, but you better be careful.
All right, we'll look into it, thanks for that, Sam.
Could I respond to that?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for your words of wisdom, and we appreciate that. So we are aware of the deed restriction in the park, and we've consulted with our attorney about that, and we feel as confident as we can at this point, should we strike a partnership with the city, that we will be able to work through that process. But thank you for the question.
My vote.
Joe Summers, Sumitav, Hackensack. Like the author Jonathan Swift, I too have a modest proposal. Whatever Sears in default is doing now, here's the property right here, huge property. As Stephanie mentioned, the children would not have to cross River Street. The property is there, Sears could donate it to the YMCA. We've always had great respect for the YMCA. As a matter of fact, during World War II, my uncle stayed there when he worked for Bendix. Bendix supposedly had grass on top of it with cows, so it would be camouflaged from the Luftwaffe. So that was really the first cow meeting around here. So Green Acres means exactly that. The operative word is photosynthesis. Green grass, trees, pleasant area for the people. Photosynthesis. So, my modest proposal is to get the Sears building, either tear it down or rehabilitate it, and use all that property. The children would not have to cross River Street, and it would be all set. You wouldn't take away our Green Acres, our true Green Acres. And if we did that, just as our council was nice enough to save at least a half acre of forest, and hopefully more, at Stuy Park, we'd be in the line of great people like President Theodore Roosevelt. Although America's treasure is huge, we can do our little part here. So we don't wanna take that away from our people. Thanks very much.
Martin Kramer, Hackensack. I'm a member of the Environmental Commission, and also a member of the Y. I've been swimming at the Y for over 20, 30 years, twice a week, almost every week. In the 25-yard pool that they have, which is the same size as the pool they wanna build, in fact, almost every service that was just mentioned is presently available at the Y and Main Street, but that's not what I wanna talk about. Whatever the reason for putting the Y in Johnson Park, political, economic, tax-wise, social, legally, you can't do it. Green Acres will not permit it. Johnson Park, as most of the parks in TNEC, is on the open space Rossi, that's for recreational open space inventory. It's been on there, and Hackensack has been bound by regulations under Green Acres since the early 1980s, when you first accepted money for Carver Park. Under Green Acres regulations, they talk about not indoor construction, Green Acres is about outdoors. They're talking about open space, outdoors, and you would have to continue Johnson Park as an outdoor recreation area. And what I've just seen now, they're talking about a building. The only thing you can put in a development such as this are structures which are used to support the outdoor facilities, such as a storage shed, restrooms, things like that. You can't put a building in there. And more importantly, while the Y is a nonprofit, it is required under Green Acres rules that in their charter, it must say, quote, "The acquisition and preservation of land or water areas of a particular land or water area is a natural scenic or open..." In a natural scenic or open condition. Well, I can't say that. That's a state statute, part of Green Acres. It may be nice to put it there, I don't think it is, but you can't, for legal reasons. And I'm waiting for response. The situation you mentioned about building in parks is around the country. You mentioned one in Summit, which is under construction. You can't put buildings in an open space park, if it's in a town that's burdened by Green Acres regulations. That's it.
So I'd just like to clarify that, and you're very...he's absolutely correct, if the property is funded. So there's two different categories with Green Acres. All of your open space, whether it's funded or unfunded, ends up on the Rossi. So it's listed as it's encumbered by Green Acres. But the big difference is whether it was funded or unfunded. Green Acres offers money for development projects or to acquire land. Once you accept money from Green Acres and use it, so you have to use it, on a site, it is now encumbered, and he is totally correct, outdoor recreation only. If it's on the Rossi, and you don't take money, it's called unfunded, indoor recreation can be built, but it has to be recreation. I had the same interpretation as you, when we first started talking to the Y. But I went down Maude Snyder's, who at Green Acres is in charge of this area, met with her, discussed it, we ran through the whole thing, and to be honest, we were expecting a negative response. But turns out, the program we offer today is supported by Green Acres. Not only permitted, supported by Green Acres.
Sierra Club just outagreed.
Next, please.
Good evening, Garrett Tizano, Fairmont Avenue, I'm chairman of Environmental Commission in Hackensack. Speaking from the heart, all the efforts that recreation, DPW, and City Hall spends on trying to maintain and keep our parks the best we can, for the few parks that we have. We have three major parks in Hackensack, Columbus, Fisini, and Johnson. Then we have smaller parks like Baldwin and Second Ward Park, Pilfy Park, things like that. We need more parks, we just can't get them. Ironically, back in the winter, and some others here made comments as well, I asked about possibly purchasing that Sears parking lot, that the city could purchase it and prevent a developer from coming in and possibly, and I used the idea at the time, maybe somebody getting involved with Sears, redeveloping it, and maybe putting a parking garage in the Sears lot. I felt that, and it still bewilders me today, 'cause I don't know how that parking lot ever got into that park to begin with. I asked the city to look into it and purchase it, to protect it, just for these kind of purposes that we're hearing tonight. Nothing against the YMCA. I learned how to swim in a YMCA camp up in Seven Lakes Drive in Harriman Park as a kid. I worked on a couple of them in the past, too, in my trade, Hoboken and such. But this footprint here, with the parking lot surrounding the building, is...takes up, it looks like, about 25 to 30% of the whole park, and that's just not right. We can manage our own parks. They got a pretty good spin, the Y, and good for you, you're well-prepared, and you had your engineering studies. But I support the Y staying in Hackensack, but find another area within the redevelopment zone, and be a real partner with Hackensack. That's how I feel about it. You had a lot, you've been here a long time, you have the Main Street Alliance behind you, and you have city government behind you, but be a partner, just like other businesses in Hackensack, and find another spot. Zane's Properties for Sale right downtown, it would support the square footage that you're looking for. Yes, I know where you guys are coming from, you don't have to spend a lot of money, all right? You'd have to go and buy a piece of property that would cut down on your investment, but you know what? Everybody's doing that. Every developer that comes in here is private, and has to spend the money to purchase the property, and that's what has to be done. Good luck with your project, but I'm totally against it, thank you.
Next, please.
Regina de Pasqua. I would just like to say, Mr. Kramer made a perfect argument against Leo's Dome in the park, for the same reasons. However, and I'm well acquainted with Maude, yes, it's unfunded, and that's how Leo's Dome can be there, okay? Because it's a recreational building. And I think the children of Hackensack deserve an upgrade. My son is 21, learned to swim at the Y, went to the Y daycare, and it was old then, okay? And that was 15 years ago. It's used by the residents. It's used by the residents. The residents use this for, whether it's for swimming lessons, because where else are they going to go for swimming lessons? They're in Hackensack. You could put up a bridge over, over River Street, a walkway, you know, at the corner there. A traffic study will determine that. But it's for the kids, guys. This is always the, the tagline, "It's for the kids." And this is something that the kids use, and I know from experience, use. My son went to the summer camp. My two older boys, who are in their 30s, went to the summer camp there, where the bus, they get on the bus at, at the Y and it takes them up to Seven Lakes. It is a good neighbor. And they sell the, their property on Main Street, it goes back on the tax rolls. That's a win-win, guys. It's a win-win. We need the Y. The city needs the Y. People love to go to the Y. You're talking about all the residents you're bringing in, the Y is an attraction for residents that you're bringing in, to go swimming, to go to the weight room, to be a member of a club without having to join a country club. For, it's for the whole family, for senior citizens down to, to, you know, grade school before preschool. And that's where my son went preschool, a couple, Ms. Kathy, she was the best. It's needed. And like I said, win-win, their property gets put back on the tax roll and we have a rateable. Thank you.
I know Top Pop is a, but I'm never Top Pop.
Good evening, Kathleen Salvo, 47, Lodey Street, Hackensack. All good intentions for the Y, they've been there forever. I love, I love the building, the architect of it, but now it's all outdated. Before, back in the day, when Hackensack High School didn't have a pool, that's where Hackensack High School went to swim. The girls' leaders club always used it as, as a thing. This is great. I mean, it's a beautiful building. It is pervious land, it is also regulated by its title, so that when the water comes up, it's right there. So, I don't know. But right now, we have a lot of hodgepodge of everything. We have a little tennis courts, we have DPW, we have a garden that could be put anywhere, greenhouse that is questionable, but this is like, they're gonna build it, they're gonna pay for it, we don't have to. We spent $9 million on an M&amp;M building that, we should've came here three years ago and we would've put our basketball in there instead of at the M&amp;M building. I know Green Acres and open space is important, but we took open space down on, on M&amp;M building, it was the only open space that that neighborhood had, and you developed it. But this could be a win-win, because you'll sell your corner, which is very valuable, and you'll build a state-of-the-art facility that will be good for every age, from pre-K to old people, because this service is a big, a big variety, a big span of people. So, and like I said, no course to the taxpayers, no pilot program, and they'll flip the, the property that they're going to sell back to Hackensack. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Paige Delacchio, Spring Valley, Hackensack. I love the Y, I think the Y is a great organization. I've, my family has made use of many of the programs. I support this project, but not in this location. This is riverfront. It's one of the few places where we have full riverfront access, and though we could, you know, go in around it, it is a huge portion of that park. And, you know, I pulled up the map of the current park. It's taking a parking lot and a building and plopping it in the middle of that park, so that there's the soccer field left, a little space over there that's supposedly for tennis courts, but that's already used constantly. All of that park is used. It's just not the right place. And as far as I appreciate, I really appreciate the Y's mission where people who can't afford membership or can't afford programs are given things, but when I go to my park, I don't have to show my financial documents, because it's a public park. That's what it is. And if you register to swim at the Hackensack High School, which we, you know, is publicly available, you can swim every Wednesday night for free. So we do have certain things. If, I, I would love to see it in a different place, exactly how they said, it looks beautiful, looks wonderful, looks like a great service to our community, but not to lose a park over it. We, we need our parks. I mean, this is, we don't want to become a concrete jungle, you know? This is, this is a city suburb kind of a place, and I don't, if, let's put it this way, if you're gonna build on our park, I would like to see that property that the Y is currently on given to the city then. We'll make a park there. Something has to be done, we need green space. That's it.
Good evening, my name is Eric Martindale. I live in Maywood. Yeah, there's pluses and minuses to this application, and the one big plus, from an environmental and open space standpoint, is that that Sears lot inside the park will not be developed for some commercial or residential use. That, that is a huge plus, I do have to, to have to say that. A few points and questions. One is, there's an organization called the State House Commission, which is in charge of parkland transfers. When there is a Green Acres land that's being lost or being used for some other use, the group goes before the State House Commission and they get approval to make parkland elsewhere in the same town, and then the Green Acres land can be developed for something else. So there is a process for this, and even though it's encumbered by Green Acres, but to just give up, apparently, it looks like between the parking lot and the building, about acre and a half or two acres is gonna be essentially not green space, it'll be impervious and, and parking lots. So compensating for that elsewhere in the city is probably a good idea. Another point, which, which the mayor made about the, you know, them offering the programs for lower cost to people who are, who are limited income. If this deal goes through, that has to be in the deal. It can't be something that they'll voluntarily give up on five or 10 years in the future. That's gotta be in the deal, that that goes in perpetuity. And then, we don't see anything in the deal about what kind of deed restrictions are there? What, what happens if sometime in the future they just decide to consolidate this and go somewhere else? Can they just sell this lot to, for development? Because they're gonna then own a portion of the park, and they didn't say how much of it is being administratively transferred? Are they trend, of the, however many acres in Johnson Park, 20 acres? Are they taking two acres? Are they taking three acres? We haven't heard the details, or even shown a map with a dotted line as, as to exactly what land will be taken. Someone brought up the point of a pedestrian bridge over River Street, I think that's a phenomenal idea. And I have another idea. You know, that existing YMCA building on Main Street, you know, it's a historic treasure, and it might actually have a use for the city of Hackensack, because you guys are way short on space. And this entire building where we are right now could be given over to the Police Department, because they need more space, and they need more parking. This whole thing here, this can all be for the police. And City Hall can be the YMCA, and they've got a gymnasium that's a little bit bigger than this room, that could be the council chambers, and they have space downstairs that can be offices. There's, there's, it's possible that that building could be used by the city, and we wouldn't lose the architectural and historic treasure of that building.
Eric, I hate to cut you short, but your three minutes is up.
Yeah, I heard the bell ringing.
But we're, we're running way behind, because we still have to go into closed session, and we still have a full agenda to get to.
So I, those are my points, and I would like you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, appreciate it.
Would you like me to quickly respond or no?
Quickly, please.
Okay. So the process is actually called a change in use, we don't have to go to the state. It's actually really easy, it's a public hearing. So they make it easy for nonprofits and public entities to partner, so it's not that complicated process. I'm impressed with all your Green Acres knowledge in this whole audience. It's called a change in use. As far as conservation, it stays, it's conserved, it's still Green Acres encumbered, it's just the nonprofit is the owner of it, listed.
And how much land will you be taking?
You know, I haven't actually divided out that parking lot yet, so I'm not sure. Just so, you said about two acres, the change in impervious is about an acre on that site, believe it or not. I know, it might look like a lot more, but it's an acre. That's the change in impervious.
I'm gonna have to cut in, and Mr. Summers has already come forth before, you cannot come back up again. I see you waiting like you want to speak again. But anybody else who hasn't spoken is welcome to come up. Seeing no one, motion to close the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, Mr. City Manager, we're up to number three. There will be a public session at the end of this, if anybody's interested. For general comments, not just about this.
Number three is a discussion of the ordinance of Chapter 32 for the Police Department. This is a, an expansion and a change of the ordinance that was done by Mr. Kleiman for our city ordinance to read up to 10 lieutenants. We've made some changes, we're gonna make a reduction in the amount of captains we have, so we're gonna change the table of organization for the Police Department to make more supervision, either sergeants and lieutenants on the front line, and less administrative personnel going forward. And that's what's being proposed here. Number four is a discussion of shared services agreements with the county. We have signed up for several county programs, road servicing programs, ADA cooperative, ADA cooperative curb and ramp construction. These shared services are the ability for the city, if we run out of options, we don't have to go out to bid, we can extend ourselves to the county, they can facilitate that. Do I think that that would be the first choice that we would use? Probably not, but in an emergent situation, or a situation that we need to fill, it would be another option for us. There's no cost to the city by approving this, it's just another tool in the toolbox that we could use into the future.
And before we move on, I had noticed in the emails and the backup, if there were questions...
I questioned to find out if they thought that that was a, a, an appropriate cost because of that party being involved in this. I just got an opinion from it, I'm not consulting with them, they weren't used for this purpose.
No, no, but it said, even going way back to our prior project management, that there were some concerns about this agreement under the city's behalf.
There was.
What those concerns are, I mean, I...
Those, those concerns are that the long-term cost would be, if we utilize that, as I said before, the only person that makes that decision is the mayor and council, and it's an option. If, if it's zeroed out, I think you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Number five is a resolution appointing the Bergen County Community Development Committee. We need representatives on the board, and because of changing of staffing, our two new candidates would be Susan Fonzen and Ryan Westera, and I would be the alternate, and they would be the municipal representatives for the city.
Okay.
Number six would be a bond ordinance, streetscape improvements, and road paving update. Jim, do you want to make any comments, or?
I wasn't involved.
Okay. The, let's see.
Well, it was the 6.6, 1.9 of it is also grants will offset that.
Right. The other thing that, that comes up is, we have finally developed a working street repaving plan, and there's some streets that cover under grant funding, under the CDBG grant. One of those streets is Elm Street. We're gonna pave Elm Street, but you can't pave it till it's approved by CDBG. So it won't initially be paved, but it will be paved, and there's a list that you folks should have before you that identifies the road, 2019 road program of the streets. If you want me to read them into the record, I'll read them, they're...
Hold, that one?
Pardon me?
Starts with Holt, that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You want me to read into the record, or you folks?
If you have to, and if you want to for public record, go ahead.
Okay. The base bid is CDBG-funded is Holt Street from Frederick to Broadway, Lodi Street from South State to Jackson, Pink Street from Jackson to South Main, base bid city-funded Allen Street from Spring Valley to Catalpa, Orchard Street the entire length, Maple Avenue from the railroad track to Main Street, High Street, Third Street to the Railroad Place, Mary Street from Summit to Polyfly. Alternate one is South Summit Avenue sidewalk project, Oak Street entire length, Catalpa Avenue concrete curb project, Clinton Place from Summit to Prospect, Clinton Place from Prospect to Claridin, Clinton Place from Claridin to Terrace, Clinton Place from Linden to Pagbon, Euclid Ave one-way section, and Euclid one-way section to Prospect.
And also, Leo, to support the streetscape portion of, of this, in the past, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but we only had bonded previously for the northern end, so this is the first, where we're now going from Berry Street south.
Right.
Correct. So, so that's, this is, that's why it's not...
What happened with overlook?
We're not talking about paving, I'm talking about the streetscape, hold on. And then, you know, the other, the other part of that is, the existing development on Main Street will be reimbursing the city for the streetscapes in front of theirs, but Jim has to bond, yes, Jim?
Six million dollars.
So we can do this, and then we'll get reimbursed for some of that money. So, some of the costs that may look high, again, that substantiates between the grant money, the redevelopment paying into it, and also some of the issues where that we added the sewer work into the Main Street, and that wasn't originally there. So that kinda, there was a swap there with some of the paving that now has to be concluded, I believe. Yes, Jim?
That's right.
Yes. So that kind of explains, I think, but yeah, I had the same question about the Elm and overlook, right? Leo, was that your question?
And they will be covered by the CDBG. The other issue is that we are going to approve, it's tonight, right, the Pothole Killer?
Yep.
The Pothole Killer is a company that fills potholes. I saw an advertisement for it, I watched it, I was very impressed. So the city is gonna engage this company, and they tell us that they're gonna fill our potholes, which will start the process. It's not a permanent fix, but it certainly will control some of the potholes that we have, because with the weather conditions we've had, we've had a disaster's year for potholes. So they will be approved tonight, and they will commence probably next week. So we will start to fill all our potholes, and then the road, the road paving and resurfacing will commence. The last thing I have on the issue is the wayfinding signs for the city. This became an issue because now that the new HAC PAC has moved from 39 Broadway to State Street, we need to give direction to people that are coming to the city of Hackensack to go to the new theater. The HAC PAC was branded HAC, H-A-C-P-A-C, and there's some comment of shortening that to HPAC. I don't think we switch in mid-branding, the marquee is done that way, the advertisements are done that way.
Who's talking about making it H-PAC?
There's been some people that think we should cut that short, and I said, "I don't know how you change in mid-screen."
We'd let HAC back for, I mean...
It's a council decision, but I just need a decision for you folks. We're sticking with H-A-C-P-A-C as the branding, and that's what the sign is just gonna be.
No one's come before this council suggesting it or giving us a reason why, so I don't see any reason to change it.
The last is that there was some discussion about these vans from PSE&amp;G. I met with the representative, representation of PSE&amp;G and the two supervisors. Four of those vans are for gas leak detention, detection. So if there's a problem with a leak or reported, these people are on call to respond immediately, and then they have to crew up for the trucks or the construction crew that's going to fix the leak. So these vehicles, as it was discussed, have to be legally parked, but they are permitted under these circumstances to be within the city, because they are part of the response team for gas leak and service repairs on an emergent basis. Thank you, that would complete the city manager's report.
Some of these cars, they have driveways, put them in the driveway.
All of this was discussed in the meeting.
Yeah. So they're gonna be put in their driveways?
Yes, sir. Councilment Tagley was present at the meeting when I had the discussion with them.
If the person that work for PSE&amp;G, they got a driveway, they're gonna put the car in the driveway. Or sometime they're gonna find out for the intent, a closed gas station, a place closed to the house, and that way, if they have an emergency, they will take the car and take care of the emergency.
They don't park in their driveway?
It was explained again. If they're not legally parked and they're not properly put away, this will be reported to me, I'll get ahold of PSE&amp;G, and the assignment will be pulled. They made a very point.
Okay. In a motion to open the public, please?
Offer. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward, give your name to the clerk, please. name to the clerk, please. You have three minutes.
Victor Sassen, Euclid Avenue. Could you clarify the paving of Euclid Avenue? It's just the one-way sections, not the section between Passaic and, I mean, yeah.
They're gonna go from Prospect to Summit.
Oh, it's gonna, okay. I just wanted to bring, oh, I'm sure the council's aware of the amount of money that we, the city pays for public, for fire protection charges from Suez Water Company. The total amount is $343,000 for 2019, and $103,000 of the fire protection charges we pay to Suez are for, apparently, to check the fire hydrants in the city. There are 531 fire hydrants. But the Fire Department in Hackensack already checks these fire hydrants twice a year. And I'm wondering if the city is interested in asking Suez for some kind of credit for the $103,000 that we get charged for this redundancy?
We had actually started to address this already, so I'll let the manager talk to it.
We have already contacted Suez and found out, or inquired, I should say, what, if any, reduction in the cost for this fee. And currently, they offer no programs to do this. I know communities that do hydrant flushing themselves, but as it was explained to me from the fire chief, and there is a memo written, I'd be a liar to say I could find it right this second, that explains that they test this for pressure, condition, and hydrant flushing, obviously, especially on dead-end runs where silt or sediment builds up. And it's been a longstanding practice for over 10 years. However, as this has been brought to the attention of the mayor and council, we are now having discussions about coming up with a plan, because that concern is that the cost of this is obviously quite high. $300,000 is a huge hit to the city budget. So, we are addressing that, and we are investigating. And at some point in time, when I can arrange a meeting to sit down with Suez, but I know for, thus far, we've learned that Suez does not offer any consideration to any municipality in a reduction of the costs currently.
What's your understanding for the annual transmission and distribution system charges, which is the bulk of the 300, it's 240,000? What does that mean? What is that, is that based on the amount of mains in the city? But is that for water? Or is that just for the fact that they have the pipes? Is that for maintaining the pipes?
This is, this is the part that I have not had the time. As the mayor just brought up, this has just recently come up on the radar. But I will fully investigate this, and I will report back.
I just wanted to ask when the-
Sure.
The conversion of Main Street to Two Ways, when is that gonna begin?
Kathy, you can-
Next year.
Till next year. We want to make sure the sewer separation's finished.
Thank you very much.
We won't do it twice. Next, please.
Yes, Kathleen Salvo. Please tell me again, Lodi Street, from where? South State Street to Jackson? Was that the, you said it faster than I did?
South State to Jackson.
South State Street to Jackson?
Yep.
Okay. Because the worst part, I mean, it's bad down there, but the worst part is from South State Street to Green Street. I mean, by Hobart Street, the road is literally caved in.
They're both bad. I agree. They're both bad.
No, but it's worse there. That could be possible. It's worse by Hobart Street. And now, it just, it's gonna be like a sinkhole. It just caved in more, because I lost, I almost lost a tire there last night. So, that's, I don't know how it could be fixed, because it's sunk. So, it's more than just a pothole. It's like one of those things that go down forever. The wayfinding signs, they actually want to change all the signs that we have put all over the, all over the town? Because everybody has GPSs. They can find it. They just want to change the one name. They want to put it from-
The only discussion that was brought up is changing the name of the HAC PAC, and I, I didn't support that, but that's mayor and council's decision. But we're gonna have to relocate the signs that used to direct people to 39 Broadway to State Street. That's the only thing that's a point.
But everybody has GPSs, so I think they'll find it that way. The price of the six, what is it, six million, seven hundred? For the streetscaping, does that include separation of sewers, or if that's just trees and garbage building? What is that money for, all that money?
Of the six, as I said, of the 6.6, 1.9 is grant money that's coming in. Some of the money that was planned for paving had to be used for the sewers instead. That money was not included in the original. So, now, we're taking the money that we need to finish the paving.
Okay. Because I was saying, it's a lot, a lot of trees and garbage building.
So, a lot of it was for sewer separation. But in addition, the streetscape portions that are in front of new properties, the owners and the developers of those properties understand that they will reimburse the city for their portions. So, some of this money will also come back to us from that.
We had said, if you do it in one entirety, then they have to come back and open, and open the streets. So, this has to be pre-done before the street gets done? Because you're gonna have a lot of people-
This is all, this is all a coordinated effort, so that what's being done will not have any impact on when the streets get paved. It's all being done as part of the same effort. As, like, some of the sewer pipes being put in now, they're gonna work in conjunction with each other, so that we don't have to do it twice.
Separate everything, so we don't have to go back and at another day.
Twice, correct, correct.
Once we finish paving this, we're done.
Right.
With all parts.
Because you don't want to come back in. Because you always see that. Every time they tell us, and then a month later, they're chopping up the, up the street. My other thing is for aesthetics. People were complaining about putting parking meters back on Main Street, because nobody uses parking meters anymore. And it's twofold. They're ugly, number one, everybody uses those little, whatever, those kiosk things, whatever they call. And the other thing for snow removal, if you want our DPW to go and clean that squeaky clean on Main Street, like you did last year, because you did a good job, those parking meters get in the way. You have to go around them. Then you mound the snow there, and it's so much easier to just sweep it out in a way than it is to go around the meters, because they're obstruction. And I learned this when I went to Montreal. All their meters were against the buildings. And I said, why? They said, because when we do snow removal, it's, they clean it in one entirety, and they're not obstructing. You have to go around these little things. And aesthetically, it looks better, too, if you go and put the thing in the machine.
I like the kiosks.
Yeah, everybody has them. It's like the big thing.
You can look back in your notes. There was a reason, because that was our original plan. And with the parking consultants, and they did the analysis, it had something to do, too, with the distances. People would have to walk a longer way, because our streets were longer on the-
No, they strategically placed them.
Kathy, there was reasons.
Kathy, go look at, go get different experts. Trust me. Everybody does it. It's the end thing. And for snow removal and cleaning the sidewalk, it's worth it.
I think you need to get the information, Ted, from the-
I would, I would, I would think.
Because that was our first plan, Kathleen. The same reason that you have.
Everybody has them.
Do you remember, Albert?
Albert, yes?
Okay. Then that's it. We have to get in the back.
I can't remember what it was.
My recollection is, is, you know, we had a number of conversations with Lenbeer, who's a parking guru. We had conversations with Tim Tracy Desmond. The opportunity to use a pay station, you're calling it a kiosk, pay station, was not recommended by them because of the length of, of, the lengths that would be involved. They're expensive to own, they're expensive, they're expensive to operate and maintain, they break down. And when compared to dual-head meters, when you use a dual-head meter, you eliminate half of the meters now, because you're not using a single, you're putting two on one pole. And with respect to being, cleaning up for snow removal, you still have to contend with street lamps, you still have to contend with street furniture, you still have to contend with signage, you still have to contend with a number of things that, that by the time you just, you compare that against the number of dual-head poles, you're not really saving all that much in terms of snow removal.
Good point.
So, in the end, the advice that we got from a number of seasoned veteran parking consultants was just stick dual-head meters, make them credit card-enabled, give them options for smartphone payments, and you will be better off in this scenario than you would with pay stations. There are applications for pay stations. We're putting them in all our lots. We're putting a pay station over by the courthouse, because it makes sense, because there's a number of cars that are clustered in one area. But Main Street and the environs on Main Street do not lend themselves to pay.
Thanks very much, Lenbeer.
The other disadvantage is that you need somebody to physically go and empty those things out. So, you need cars and people, personnel. You gotta pay people to do it. So, in the long time, you do save money. And I, and I was, I talked to somebody, another expert, and they said those machines are much better than the meters. So, I would-
Can we get you a copy of the report, Kathy?
Yeah.
It'll be in all of the garages and-
But then you need meter mades, you need cars, and that's probably why, because that company probably supplies us. We hire them.
That still completes my report.
Okay. We are done. Motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to go into closed session?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adjourn the executive session?
Offer. Second.
Now, I need a motion to adjourn the Cal session?
All in favor? Aye.
Motion to adjourn the Cal session?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.